I'd like to call this meeting to order, please. And we're going to open with a moment of silence and the pledge led by Ms. Bounds.
Salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I am not seeing any elected officials. If you're out there and I haven't spotted you, please let me know. Seeing none. Since our high school graduations are scheduled from May 14th through 18th, and our school year will conclude prior to the next scheduled board meeting, on behalf of the entire board, I want to say congratulations to all of our 2019 graduates, and also wish all of our students, family, and staff a wonderful, restful, and well-deserved break. Also, as you may know, this is Teacher Appreciation Week and National Nurse Appreciation Week. So please be sure to say thank you to all of our amazing people that have worked so hard this year to make our schools as successful as they are. And with that note, I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Thomas.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Of course, as you said, National Teacher Appreciation Week. And we have so many outstanding teachers and outstanding employees overall. But I know our teachers work extremely hard with our students each and every day, and we're just so appreciative of the work they do. And our Public Affairs Department has put together about a three-minute video that I think is very appropriate for this evening, for the board to look at, as well as the audience, just to honor our teachers and to show you just how powerful our teachers are in the lives of our students. So if everything works okay technology-wise, we're ready. So thank you.
Say and spell your name.
Logan Crawford.
Harper Kirby.
Elliot Hooks.
Trinity Mattress.
Valedictorian.
Bearden High School.
Valedictorian. Gibbs High School.
Zoe Porman. Valedictorian. Fulton High School.
Elia Rancher. Also valedictorian. Fulton High School.
Valedictorian.
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 I aspire to one day have my own veterinarian practice because I want the small animals.
Major in biochemistry and then go on to med school.
Aspiring to be a software engineer when I get older.
I want to be a pediatric cardiologist.
I intend on going to UT.
MIT. Columbia University.
I found out I got a perfect score in my ACP.
My robotics team made it all the way to world competitions.
Ninth grade in my science lab club. I actually went to the national competition and won a gold medal.
Teachers.
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 I really like the community that Carntons High School has, and a big part of that is the teachers. They really give us the opportunity to learn in every situation.
Teachers.
Teachers.
They give great advice and great snacks.
Teachers.
Teachers.
Ms. Gilbert was my AP Biology teacher.
His name is Mr. James Anderson. He's an English teacher there.
Ms. Eisenhower. She got married, so now she's Ms. Campbell. But she influenced me so much.
My eighth-day math teacher, Mr. Taylor, really encouraged my love for math.
Chemistry is hard, really, but she made it really fun. She made it interesting.
I grew up without a mother, and so I never really had that strong female role model in my life. And Ms. Eisenhower was that for me.
She's always told me that I could do anything that I put my mind to, and she's always been there to encourage me and push me forward.
Let me eat lunch with her when I had no one to go to. And she always let me talk and then... And she always was the best chemistry teacher ever.
She's a shoulder to cry on, and I wouldn't have been able to get through my high school career without her.
She gave me the confidence to not only public speak and... but to be there for other girls like me.
Thank you, Mr. Crawford.
Thank you, Ms. Wood and Mrs. Valentine.
Thank you, Mr. Arnold.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson.
Thank you, Mrs. West.
Thank you, Mrs. Eisenhower. Now Campbell.
Thank you, Ms. Buckman.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor.
Thank you, Ms. Fine.
Thank you, Ms. Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Burke Strasser.
Thank you, Mrs. Gilbert.
Thank you, Mrs. Bales and Mr. Dotson.
Thank you.
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 Very, very powerful video. And a great job, Carly, in Public Affairs Department for putting that together. And just, again, just goes to show how much influence our teachers have with our students and on our students, actually, too. So, you know, and we're trying budget-wise. We're still trying to get to 4%. So that may happen, and we don't know yet. But I think this is just a good example of why we need to try to get to, at least get to 4%, you know, for our teachers and all. So again, thank you, Carly, and Public Affairs Department, and appreciate the video. Thank you, Madam Chair, board.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Changes to the agenda. Do I see any? Ms. Bounds?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to ask that 9E, under board policies, both of those versions be removed and sit to the policy review meeting on, I believe, June 26th, which is our next one.
Seeing no objection. Are there any other changes? All right. I would like to, also, without objection, ask for flexibility... Oh, I was going to ask for flexibility in our bus drivers, but I believe I've gotten the notice that they are all here. All right, we'll keep that in board order, then. Board members, you've all received a copy today, a hard copy, and an email yesterday regarding an additional version of Board Policy B-180, Public Forum, that Ms. Owen would like you to consider. Does everyone have that in front of them and also the attachment? Okay, great. Seeing no other changes, do I see a motion to approve the agenda? Horn and Norman, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, moving on to special recognition of Ridgedale School. Dr. Ryswick? Go ahead, Dr. Ryswick.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have one of our schools, Ridgedale School, Ms. Diana Gossett, who is our principal there. And the State Department is here to recognize them for an exemplary award that they were given. So I'll turn it over to her to explain the details.
Great.
Good evening.
Hello.
I'm Pat Connor. I'm the Executive Director of the Office of Student Support for the Tennessee Department of Education. And within my shop, I have the honor of being over alternative education programs in Tennessee. And in 2017, we have a Governor's Alternative Advisory Board for Alternative Education Advisory Board. And in 2017, we partnered with the Tennessee Alt Ed Association to establish an exemplary program for alternative education. And those standards... Not many people know, alternative schools have standards for alternative education that include relationships, skill development, just a myriad of standards that they live up to. And so in our program, we call it the Exemplary Programs and Practices in Alternative Education Recognition Program. It's by application. Schools apply to be a part of this. After the schools apply, the advisory board screens those applications and then selects the schools to participate in that site visit. We went to Ridgedale. And I have to tell you guys, you have Jewel in Ridgedale Alternative School. Diana Gossett and her team run an excellent program. And I just want to give you some quick highlights of what we saw there. Not only did we see an educational opportunity for middle-school students that have received some type of long-term suspension or expulsion, we saw high-qualified teachers giving direct instruction to those students. We saw relationships. We saw support. We saw caring faculty and staff that empower students to be their best. Our alternative education students are our most at-promised students. They deserve our greatest resources. And with Ridgedale, I can truly say they exemplify the finest quality for alternative education in the state of Tennessee. So it's with great honor and privilege that I would like to recognize Ridgedale Alternative School for being a recipient of the 2019 Alternative Education Recognition Program.
Ms. Gossett?
Pat, thank you very much for coming. Because I know you had to drive all the way from Nashville to do that. Thank you. I'd just like the opportunity to say a few words. First of all, Ridgedale's a very special place. And we serve children from every single district in the county. We are in Mr. Norman's district, but there isn't a district where it's not represented at our school. And so I want to put out a challenge to all of the board members. If you have not visited our school, please do so. There are incredible teachers. There are incredible teaching assistants who do work with the kids that have been suspended. They do work with the kids that have behaviors that really need small, structured, safe environments. And that's what our school provides for them. So please, over the next year or so, take a few minutes and come spend some time in the classrooms at Ridgedale. You'll see that there are great teachers all over Knox County, but there are great teachers at Ridgedale Alternative Center. Thanks.
Okay, moving right along. We're going to have our bus driver recognition. And at this time, I'll turn the program over to Ms. Severance. Thank you, Madam Chair. And I'm going to ask Ryan Dillingham, the Director of Transportation, to go ahead with the program.
Thank you, Ms. Severance. Madam Chair, esteemed members of the board, Mr. Superintendent, thank you very much. There's a common thread that unites all of us in this room tonight. We share a bedrock belief in the transformative power of education. We just watched a wonderful three-minute video about the power of teachers. Couldn't have struck more home if they tried. It is our duty to best equip our children to meet and overcome the challenges that life's journey puts in their way, a duty that all members of Knox County schools take very seriously. The loftiest goals and most high-minded intentions mean little, however, if students cannot access them. Transportation can be a limiting factor to many of our families, particularly for the underserved in our communities. School bus drivers provide the means for many to access their inalienable right to an education. In this way, bus drivers are the gatekeepers to our best intentions. Andy White of Ted Russell Ford Lincoln &amp; Isuzu made this award possible. He can't be with us right now. He's hoping to be able to join us a little bit later. But I would still like to extend my heartfelt thanks to him and his organization for their ongoing dedication to student transportation. It is through Mr. White's generous contributions that we're able to continue our efforts to recognize the good works done by student transportation professionals in Knox County. At this time... Well, I'm going to skip that part. All right. Okay. We received 165 separate nominations for Bus Driver of the Year from school staff, student riders, parents, and other bus drivers. The six people we're going to recognize this evening were chosen because of the outstanding service they provide to the students of Knox County. For them, driving a bus is not a job. It's a calling. It is my honor to stand before you this evening and pay tribute to them for their service. All right. I'm going to call a driver's name. And when I call your name, if you'd be so kind as to come up to the front, the board chair and the superintendent are going to present you a plaque and a certificate. And if you would please stay up at the front, we'll get a picture with everybody and then take a deep shot at the end. All right. First up, because I'm doing things alphabetically, Don Andrews. Don drives Bus 192 for Macmahan Buses Incorporated. He's been driving for 18 years and currently serves special-needs students at Chris and Berry Elementary and Fulton High School. Hey, Don. You're not off the hook quite yet. The word that comes to mind when thinking of Don is willing. He's willing to accept extra work on himself to spare it on others. He's willing to help in whatever capacity is asked of him, willing to take whatever steps are necessary to provide the safest environment for the kids on his bus. In the words of a staff member that has the privilege of working with him regularly, "Mr. Don builds relationships with his parents and makes every student feel like they are the most important child in the world." He's always a bus driver we can count on for anything, and he is a role model for our students. There could never be enough words to express how grateful we are for Mr. Don and how long he has served our kids. Next, I'd like to bring David Bowling up front. Dave drives Bus 9129 for Darlene Bowling. He's been driving for 29 years and currently serves the students of Pond Gap Elementary, West Hills Elementary, and Bearden Middle School. David is a concerned and conscientious bus driver. He is unfailingly professional and goes out of his way to look out for those on his bus, even taking the time to explain why he is late on the rare occasions he is behind schedule. A few months ago, a parent who usually meets her child at the bus stop was not there. In her words, "David kept her daughter calm and got her safely back to the school where I picked her up." She said that she was not scared at all because he remained calm and reassured her that everything was going to be okay. David took charge of an unusual situation and managed it perfectly, all while keeping his focus where it should be, on making sure a little girl knew she was going to be taken care of. Next up is Peggy Claiborne. Peggy is one of our bus contractors in addition to being a bus driver. She's been driving for 36 years and currently drives Bus 82, serving Cedar Bluff Elementary School and Cedar Bluff Middle School. This may sound a little counterintuitive, but sometimes talking about Peggy is more about what does not happen than what does happen. What does not happen is that we do not have mechanical problems with her fleet. We do not have buses with no drivers to drive them. We do not have issues with bus stops not being made and students not getting to school. We do not have friction with school staff, parents, or other bus drivers, or bus contractors. What we do have is a concerned and involved woman who maintains the highest standards for her business. We have a bus driver who goes out of her way to look after the students in her care and to make sure that they get to and from school safely. And we do have a person enmeshed in her community who is universally loved and lauded by those she serves. Next, I'd like to ask Amy Johnson to come up front. Amy drives Bus 127 for DJK Transportation. She's been driving for 20 years and currently serves Cedar Bluff Elementary School and West Valley Middle School. While reading through the nominations for this award, the majority of the votes that Amy received came from the students that ride her bus and their parents. It carries a lot of weight with me personally if you can get buy-in from the families that you serve. And that is just what Amy has done. Overwhelmingly, they noted her smiles when kids are boarding morning and afternoon, her engagement with the community she serves, and that she knows the name of every single student that rides with her. She also inspires a feeling of safety in those she is transporting and those waiting for them at home. One mother relayed a story about her son, who's on the autism spectrum, who wanted to ride Ms. Amy's bus. She was initially worried when he wanted to be a bus rider, concerned about the actions of other students. But Amy creates such a welcoming environment on the bus that now they are overjoyed her son gets to spend time with her each afternoon. Next, I'd like to invite up Ms. Susan Sudrith. Susan drives Bus 90 for Davis Bus Lines. She's been driving for 24 years and currently serves Mount Olive Elementary School, South Doyle High School, and the LNN STEM Academy. Susan has acquired something of a reputation around Knox County for her baking. I've gotten multiple reports about her bringing sweets into her schools to help with a fundraiser as a "thank you" or sometimes just because. I want to be perfectly clear at this point that the selection committee was not bribed in any way with treats to pick Susan, although I have had a piece of one of her cakes before, and it was absolutely divine. These desserts are a physical expression of the love she feels for those around her. Earlier this year, when heavy rainfall caused widespread flooding throughout Knox County, Susan checked with each student as they got on the bus from the STEM Academy to make sure that she could get to their stops. Two students normally got off at a corner that was underwater. Susan worked with administrators, the students, and their parents via phone to identify a place where they could meet so the students could get home safely. In the words of Becky Ash, Principal at STEM, "Ms. Sudrith truly goes the extra mile as our bus driver, and we are thankful for her service." Next, I'd like to invite up Mr. Steve Walker. Steve drives Bus 258 for Rick Whitted. He's been driving for nine years and currently serves special-needs students at Fort Sanders Educational Development Center, Chris and Berry Elementary, Fulton High School, and magnet students attending Beaumont Elementary, Green Elementary, Sarahmore Green Elementary, Vine Middle, and Austin East High School. I was going to talk about Steve, as I've talked about these other outstanding drivers, but as I was reading his nominations, I realized that the parent of one of his riders said everything I wanted to say better than I could. So I just decided to quote her instead. Allow me to begin by saying that Mr. Walker has become family. He displays care, gentleness, respect, and ensures that each child is safely buckled before he ever drives off. My son is really connected with him. Who knew that a kid who never talked now greets this amazing man every morning? It brings me to tears to write this. He has never been unprofessional, not once. When late, he acknowledges and gives exact timeframes. My children love Mr. Walker, and he is a very dear, special part of their day. He deserves acknowledgement for not only doing his job but doing it with genuine love and care. We are honored that he is a part of our children's lives. Dealing with children can be tough, but the way he cares for our children makes a bus ride more than just a ride. Mr. White has been able to join us now. Andy, would you like to say anything?
No, no, I'm good.
Okay. All right.
He has something very important for the drivers.
Yes.
So just for the audience's benefit, Mr. Andy White is presenting each of these Drivers of the Year with a check for $500. As they're being seated, I do want to reiterate a special thanks to Andy White for sponsoring this, and a really big thank you to each driver. Sometimes these folks are the unseen, unsung, and don't always get, rarely get, actually the appreciation that we owe them. They drive a lot of miles every day and keep our kids safe, so thank you again. Really, thank you again. Okay, another fun thing I get to do before we get into the meeting is recognize our new Student Board Representative that will be coming on for the nineteen-twenty, or nineteen- two thousand nineteen-twenty school year. And if you would just please come on up and stand, because I want everybody to look at you while I read about you. As you know, the process to select the Student Board Representative started back in February, and I had the privilege of serving as the Board Representative on the selection committee. This year, we had a total of twelve applicants from eight different high schools. After a blind review and ranking of all twelve applications by the committee, which included myself, Secondary Ed Director Danny Trent, Principal Chad Smith, current Student Representative Hannah Self, and Community Member Valerie Stanley, the top four scoring candidates were moved through the interview process. The final four, who are all rising seniors, were Aleah Riddle of Austin East High School, Alicia Sonny of Farragut High School, Noah Kelly of Karnes High School, and Lucas Brooks of West High School. I want to thank each of these finalists personally, on behalf of the committee and on behalf of the entire board. I will tell you, if these students are any indication of what our future holds, we are in good, good hands. Representative for the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty school year just happens to be from Karnes High School is Mr. Noah Kelly. We are so glad to have you with us, Noah, and I want you to all give him a big round of applause. And just to give you a little taste of kind of what these students are, the process is very rigorous, and again, as former chairs know, it is a tough, tough process to go through. The kind of person that we picked today, when I called to let him know that he'd been selected, he wasn't home at the time because he was trying out for drum major at the high school. And then, when I finally did get him, his first words were, "Well, Ms. Hill, I can come, but I have to leave right after presentations because I've got honors and AP exams tomorrow that I have to study for." So, that right there just speaks to the caliber of students that we have in this system. So, again, congratulations. All right. I believe that concludes our presentations and announcements. We'll move on to the Consent Agenda.
Item eight, Consent Agenda.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item nine A, approve first reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy B-180, public forum as amended.
Ms. Horn.
Madam Chair, we have some speakers for this agenda item. As a reminder to the audience, the Board of Education desires to hear from individuals and groups on matters important to education. It is the intent of the Board to promote mutual respect, stability, and orderly conduct among district employees, parents, and the general public. Comments should be made with courtesy and respect at all times. Public forum speakers shall address remarks to the entire Board and not individual members. Each person speaking shall state his or her name and county of residence and have up to five minutes to make remarks. The Chair or Vice Chair shall have the authority to terminate the remarks of any individual who is disruptive, degrading, or insulting to any and all Board members and Knox County Schools' employees, or who does not adhere to public forum rules. Members of the Board and the Director of Schools may have the privilege of asking questions of any person who addresses the Board, and Board members will generally not respond to any questions. And our first speaker for this item is Vivian Shipe. If you'll state your name and county of residence.
Vivian Shipe, Knox County.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. I come before you today with a reminder. For some of you, it has been a year since you were elected to serve the citizens of Knox County. For some of you, it's your second term, a term that began as every one of you stood right here in the center of this floor, surrounded by your loved ones and your friends, with a crowd of witnesses in the audience, watching on TV and social media. You raised your hand, you were sworn in, and you signed your name to an oath that ended with "So help me God." That oath begins with your acceptance of the high honor and the trust that has been placed in you by the citizens of Knox County. You, who we elected to serve in the best interest of our children. You, who we believed in when we went into that voting booth and used our most sacred right, the right to vote, and we pushed the button for you. We believed that you would, as you solemnly swore, you would faithfully execute the duties of the office to which you were elected. The seat of leadership is not easy. However, you must not respond to your position of authority with hatred, with fear, or with retaliation, for you serve in a nation that has a democratic process. We are not a third-world country where our voices are controlled by the very leaders we placed in office. We built this country on a freedom of speech, rights, 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 our rights in the United States of America, and our rights in Knox County and Knoxville, Tennessee. You, the members of the Knox County Board of Education, have a responsibility to listen to the people whose children have been placed in your charge. This is a dangerous moment. This is a defining moment. And so I come today to bring you a charge. Leave public forum alone. Do not do this thing that you're about to do, for if you do, you will surely find out, as those who were not reelected to those very seats in which you seat, that the citizens of Knox County will not forget, and they will fill that seat with another. And the very God before whom you swore and took that solemn oath shall surely have you answer for it when you come before Him. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Wheeler?
Madam Chair, Board Members, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I have here in front of me, my name is Carl Wheeler, and I am a resident of Knox County and have been for thirty-plus years. Just a side note, both of my kids graduated from Karnes, okay? So, I'm pleased with how their lives turned out. Both of them are working and contributing members of our society. So, those things that we heard earlier relative to the teachers and the drivers and things, they get my vote. But when we look at this operations policy here, B-180, I have the earlier version here in front of me, and I have the proposed changes in front of me. And as Ms. Shipe said a minute ago, you don't need to change it. What you have is working well, and what you have allows folks like myself and others to come before you and speak on things that we are concerned about. And I think it's our, as a citizen, to bring issues to you all relative to the topic at hand. So, I encourage you not to reduce the time of speaking, to not go through this signing on, filling out forms, submitting paperwork. That creates additional work for you guys. Somebody in your staff has gotta keep track of all that. And remember, the goal here is to take and understand the public concerned about various issues. As I said a minute ago, the program as you have it right now, as far as I'm concerned, it should stay that way. It gets the job done, you know who's coming. Sometimes we have individuals that may get a little bit out of hand, but the chairperson has the regale, she can take care of that. So, I encourage you to leave the plan that is B-180 as it currently stands. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wheeler. Constance Evry.
I think it's no secret that we can say-
Please state your name and county of residence.
My name is Constance Evry. I live in Knoxville, Tennessee, 301 North Chicago Drive.
Thank you.
It's no secret, that's part of the reason why we have issues. Every time I come to this mic, someone interrupts me, every time, no matter what platform it's for, it's always someone. And this is a prime example of what we're talking about. It's, to me, no secret that this bill is very possibly written just for me. Clearly, someone's really mad at me up here. Why? I'm sure there's a lot of reasons to why, because I'm unapologetic. I do speak on behalf of my community. I do have nieces and nephews that attend schools in Knox County School District. I do work with children that go to these same schools. I do listen to these children and these parents when they tell me the concerns and issues and matters that they have. I do listen when they tell me that they've been here themselves numerous times, talking to you all, talking to other entities of our local government, going to the police departments, et cetera, with their complaints and other necessities, yet they are never heard, unaddressed, and even not even possibly even considered by some of you all. And as Ms. Vivian has pointed out, you took an oath, an oath. I am a disabled combat veteran. I fought for this country in Afghanistan with several other soldiers and several other entities of our military forces. When we went out there, I never once said, "Oh, I'm just gonna fight just for Knoxville, or just for Tennessee, or just for the black people, or just for the poor people, or just for certain demographics." No. When I went overseas, I fought for the United States of America. I supported my Constitution, my Bill of Rights, and our amended rights. The biggest one of what we're challenging today is our amendment of the first one, freedom of speech. That's what this bill is trying to suppress, freedom of speech. This is a public entity job. You are voted here, like Ms. Vivian said, by trust. We trust you to do your job here. And then, when we are displeased, it's almost like an insult, and even a slap in the face, especially for a veteran, to say, "Well, we don't like what you gotta say, so we're gonna figure out a way to suppress your voice here by saying we're gonna make up new rules and regulations." Because why? Word effect though, government anyways ran by charter, so it gives you a lot of room to do a lot of things that really, honestly, wouldn't be probably approved across this country. I, look at this bill, could you take this to the Supreme Court and actually win with this type of bill? If we really brought a third good Marshall-style-type lawyer to challenge it, would it really uphold in such entities of our law and our government? Would you really get that type of support from your judicial comrades? And if the question comes to that answer of a no, then what are you doing at this point? Why do you not want to hear your public's voice? Why do you not want the feedback of those who vote you here? Why would you not want to know the concerns and matters of the people, and especially dealing with what our precious, most valuable entity to us all is our children? How many of you all have children that go to this school system? If you do, then how could you sit there as a parent with a kid in the school and tell your own kid, "I don't wanna hear your voice at my job because I'm not worried about your concerns"? It's an insult, that's really what it comes down to. And I'm like, Ms. Vivian, if you can't get the job done, that means you don't belong here. And she's absolutely right. We won't forget, we won't forget a single person or a single name, like she says. Some of you all are up for reelection. Some of you all, y'all got a little bit of marathon left to go. But at the end of the day, no one will forget who was here when this took place. And you better believe, people like me especially, who are talking to the public, I will always inform them, "This person don't belong here, we are not voting for them, therefore, they do not get our checkmark." I don't care what promises you make, I don't care how much you make it sound good for us, you can't get my vote because when you had your office and you had your opportunity of term, we gonna look at that, the track record of fact, not what you promised me today. So, I find it really disturbing that we even have such a conversation. And like I said as before, as a veteran of this country, it gets no more insulting than that. You know, I'm gonna leave on this note, I hate when people tell me, "Thank you for your service," because my question is, what are you thanking me for? I live in a country where if I'm not in uniform and I go to a traffic stop, I could lose my life because of stereotypes and stipulations that are placed behind people like me, or vice versa. I sit here and watch my country mistreat each other day in and day out. I watch people lie, lie day in and day out under oath, but you thanked me for that. No, don't thank me for that, that's not what I stood for ever, not once. Thank you.
Thank you. Amelia Parker.
Hi, good evening. My name's Amelia Parker, I'm a Knox County resident. I wanted to speak about public forum tonight and raise three issues. Some of what has already been said tonight, I completely agree with. But the first point that I wanted to bring up is, the way I see public forum is, sure, it should be a space where our rights as citizens are recognized, but more than anything, it's to build good relationships with those in your community and provide space to resolve conflict and find solutions together in a community setting. So, whether it's the school board, or whether it's other local legislative bodies, I feel it's really important for our elected representatives to model behavior back to our community of how to resolve conflict, especially in a city experiencing so much violence, especially in a school system that's experiencing, unfortunately, pushout and still disparities when it comes to discipline. There's so much that we can learn about how to work together, how to listen to each other. You know, in this moment, I just have five minutes, and because I'm given that opportunity, it's enough, right? I can come and spend my time and express in whatever way that I want to, to some degree, what my feelings are. And that allows me to release some, you know, stress- sure, it should be a space where our rights as citizens are recognized. But more than anything, it's to build good relationships with those in your community and provide space to resolve conflict and find solutions together in a community setting. So whether it's the school board or whether it's other local legislative bodies, I feel it's really important for our elected representatives to model behavior back to our community of how to resolve conflict, especially in a city experiencing so much violence, especially in a school system that's experiencing, unfortunately, pushout and still disparities when it comes to discipline. There's so much that we can learn about how to work together, how to listen to each other. You know, in this moment, I just have five minutes. And because I'm given that opportunity, it's enough, right? I can come and spend my time and express in whatever way that I want to, to some degree, what my feelings are. And that allows me to release some, you know, stress and feel like I've been heard, even if you all don't do exactly what I asked you to do. This is a space for us to resolve that conflict. My concern is that when, not only the limitation, but the appearance of the limitation will only create increased conflict, and you'll have people showing up at school board meetings who don't feel like their voice can be heard, and so they just want to disrupt. And we haven't had that at school board meetings. I've been a part of a lot of vocal groups who've come to these meetings, but we respect the process. And we want to hear from our neighbors, and we want to get to a resolution. And I think that that should continue. The other issue I wanted to bring up was accessibility. This morning, I bailed a mother out of jail in our Knox County jails. And after we left the jail, first place we went was Target and got her a cellphone so that she could be connected to the world in some sort of way. When I dropped her off at home, she is a mother. She doesn't have internet. She just has a flip phone now with a certain number of minutes on it. So when we think about accessibility, I think it's good to add options. I would enjoy, you know, signing up online, usually. And I think pretty much every time, I've always signed up on the day of. Because I don't know what my schedule's gonna be. And, which is my third point, the information coming from the administration to the board, it comes so late. Even today's agenda item, I have three different versions. I don't know which version is the right one. I just got a new one today. So there was a point when I thought, "No, I don't need to speak." But as I still had questions and concerns, it was today that I decided to sign up. Similarly with the budget. I think we got the budget like the day before the meeting. So that's, you know, not only am I a community leader who wants to come and share my thoughts, but usually, I'm one of those trying to spread the word and let other folks know. And I'm letting folks know who may get off work at 5:00. And they can't get here at 4:55 to sign up, that's a privileged position to be in. So I just want y'all to keep in mind the issue of accessibility. Who has the privileges to be able to meet this new potential criteria, if there is? And what's really gonna maintain a good relationship with the community and a productive meeting? Thank you.
David Hayes.
Yes, my name is David Hayes, proud resident of Knoxville and Knox County. I'm speaking on, of course, this public forum debate, and I stand in solidarity with everybody who came before me. I think everybody brought up some exit points that all you all should consider. And just to add some more to what's been said, is that, you know, a crucial part of democracy is participation. You know, people in the community having a chance to participate in the political process. Some of you up here might believe that since you got voted, that's enough, and that people shouldn't have another say in what goes on in their lives, in their schools, in their school board, in the county government. That's false. Right? If you actually want a democracy where everybody's engaged, people's to have multiple ways to engage. So what y'all are doing is, at its core, undemocratic. At its core, against so many of the values and principles that people in this room and this country save for. You know, it cuts deep when you say, "We don't wanna hear your voice anymore." And we wanna legislate, we wanna control your lives, but make it harder for you to say anything about it. And when you ask the questions of, "Why would y'all want to do this? Why would you not want people to come up here and speak?" And that's the question. Is it because of the ridiculously high class sizes in some schools? Is it because of the bullying that's going on in so many schools with so many queer kids, trans kids, gay kids, LGBTQ plus kids being bullied at schools and not actually enough infrastructure in our schools to deal with it? Is it because of the racism that's running rampant in our discipline system? Where one out of three kids, or if you're a black student, you're three times as likely to get pushed out by arrest and suspension? You know, is it because of the racism? Is it because of your underfunding magnet schools and school programs that people need to get through, yeah, to get through school and graduate and become successful? Because there's lots of issues going on in the school board. And I've seen, I remember, what was it, last year? When folks were defending Project Grad and defending the magnet schools and, you know, folks came out here in the hundreds. And I imagine that when you come to the decision to limit public forum, that event must have been also on your mind as well. And it's troubling that that event and others where people come and speak to y'all actually has the effect of not opening your heart to wanna listen more to people. It has the effect of saying, "Oh, snap, we need to restrict this democratic process. We need to restrict the voices." That's very troubling. And we shouldn't see that in our schools. I would ask for you all to have some empathy with people who have kids, with people who are affected by our school system. And I ask for you all to, instead of trying to limit ways for people to give their voices, that you actually go out of your way to open your hands, open your ears, and open the process so more people can have a say. And not just through the public forum, but also through most of the decisions you make is actually not very democratic. You know, the budget system as it is doesn't have nearly as much community engagement as it should. People shouldn't have to, people shouldn't have to raise something they think they've been raising. There should be a way for people to participate in developing the priorities and the goals of the budget. And, you know, that's a longer way off plan, but, you know, cutting and restricting public forum is doing nothing to that end. Yeah, and that's everything I want to say. I also want to say, like, I'm running for office soon. I think something that's important for me is to realize that I am not, my goal of getting in office is not necessarily for me to control and just do things in government that affect other people's lives. It's to actually listen to people, have people participate in the political process, and for me to be a vehicle for that community voice, for that community voice, for that power to be transferred, and the things to get done based off of what people say, not inherently just on what me and myself and what my friends wanna do. It's about having people's participation and people's voice. And all of you are elected here, I hope y'all have a shared value. Obviously not if y'all decide to vote against this or for restricting public forum. And thank you all for listening.
Thank you. That concludes public forum on this topic.
Thank you, Ms. Horn. Do I hear a motion to approve First Reading, Policy B-180? Ms. Cotten has just pointed out that there are two versions. The one we are looking at, I believe, is the one just handed to us by Ms. Owen. Has this been, and this is out public record, all right. Mr. Norman.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Do appreciate our speakers that came to public forum.
Excuse me, could we have a motion in a second?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to refer this back to committee.
All right.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to refer this back to Policy Review Committee. Is there any discussion?
Yes, I'd like to make a comment.
All right.
Okay, thank you. I do appreciate these comments that you all have made, and you brought up several good points. I'm certainly one of the ones that probably spoke out in the most restrictive ways about public forum. And indeed, I'm reconsidering some of these things. So I do appreciate that, and I do agree with a lot of your points that you've made. So I appreciate you all.
Ms. Bab.
I would just like to say, I appreciate the speakers also. And, you know, I'm actually glad we're taking this back to review. I will state, because I know a lot of people talk about the time limits, but I have been someone that does support limiting it down to four minutes, and I'm just gonna explain why. I, last year, was not on the school board, and I sat through the Project Grad meeting of all the speakers, and it was powerful. I was very moved by all the speakers. And I love the fact that we got to hear from all of them. But with five minutes, and when we give everyone the opportunity, which I think is what we want to do, I've seen a couple of people tonight that made excellent points, got their point across in about three minutes. And so I think we're trying to figure out, how can we make it manageable so that we're actually not falling, not dozing off at 1:00 AM? Because we want to be able to get as many people as possible to listen to. We want to be able to hear your voices. So that is why I do support the four minutes. I feel like it's plenty of time for people to get their point across. It's not in any way to limit anyone speaking. But, so I'm glad we're going back to Policy Review about it, but just, I just wanted to kind of get across my thoughts on why I think the four minutes is a good change.
Thank you, Ms. Horn.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I agree with Ms. Bab. I don't think the intention of looking at this policy has ever been to limit public speech because it just hasn't. And since we've been talking about this, we've, I've been paying attention to how long public forum speakers speak, and typically, it's around three minutes. Sometimes it goes to four, sometimes to five. But I support the four minutes. I think that, you know, if you think about having hours upon hours upon hours, which is rare, that we would have that situation. But when we do, by the time you're the 90th person, I wanna be able to pay attention to that person as well as I have the first one, but it gets a little more challenging the later in the evening it gets. So hopefully, if people have that four minutes, we would be able to get more speakers in in a timely manner. Regarding the registration, we wanna make sure that our board secretary has the ability to provide information to us during the day, during a day that we have a meeting in the evening. And a lot of times, she can get tied up with public forums. So it's really simply about making sure that she has the ability to provide information to us. If staff is giving information to us, or whatever is happening, that she has the ability to do that. And so that's why we talked about making it the day before. I was going to suggest, you know, that we look at maybe 11:59 PM the day prior to the meeting, so that you would have the whole evening prior to the meeting. So the intent is not to make it more difficult. I also am in favor of allowing people to sign up at the beginning of our meeting, before that meeting starts in the evening. So I don't think the intention is at all, in my mind, to limit public forum or people's freedom of speech. It's simply to make sure that we're running an efficient meeting and making sure that we're protecting our secretary's time so that we have the information we need to make sure that our meetings are effective, since this is our meeting time. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Ms. Owen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think there are several inherent problems with public forum that create the difficulty in making policy around it. The fact that there's no discussion is problematic. There's no opportunity for us to respond to questions. There's no way for us to answer questions when there are questions brought up. There's no way for speakers to get accurate information while they're speaking if they've been given inaccurate information prior to the meeting. And uniquely problematic to this body is that we, it is normal, it is regular, it's not unusual. We usually have young students in our meetings. And so that also makes the issue of restraint sort of more important, I think, than in other government bodies. A speaker should be able to come and speak without being limited because so many speakers going before them have used so much time. We have had meetings recently where just public forum, had they all taken five minutes, would have been more than seven hours. And if you put that on top of a two- or three-hour meeting, that's an extremely long time for a person with young children to sit and wait for their turn. So it's important to hear from everyone, not necessarily to hear from a few for a very long time. I think our current practice also only allows signing up on the day of for the five minutes before meeting starts. And that's extremely short. It's also currently in policy worded very vaguely, even though practice has been five minutes. I think it just says "before the meeting." So there's no absolute time. I think that could be very confusing. And when we're looking at this, I think we have an issue with our agenda being perceived by the community as something the board is doing to them, rather than something the board has chosen to discuss or something someone has asked the board to discuss. It's not necessarily something the board is doing. It's just something that is being discussed. And I think that we need to do a better job, I'm not sure how, but a better job of being clear with the community that just because it's on the agenda doesn't mean that it's something that we are doing. It is just something that is being discussed. And an example I would give to a piece of misinformation is that our intent was to limit because one of the items that's in the revision was an additional way to sign up, an additional way to get the information that the community needed. But the community is not aware of that because they weren't able to hear our discussion first. And so all of these problems with public forum, I'm not sure how we need to address them, but they are all certainly inherent problems to the way we're doing it now. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Ms. Bab.
Thank you, and some of the points have already been made. But I do appreciate all the public forum speakers tonight. And I too do not feel like this policy is to eliminate anyone's ability to speak. In fact, I think Ms. Parker said it best when she said, "We've added options. We haven't taken any away. You can still call. We just tried to streamline it and move it to the 21st century as far as giving online options as well, hoping that that would help Ms. Cotten to be able to focus on what I continue to hear, that it's hard to get those revisions and you get them late on the agenda." But she has a very big task. And when she's answering phone calls and signing up, which is rare, a hundred people to speak at public forum and having a conversation with each one, it does take up a lot of time. And so we would like to make the process more efficient so that hopefully those things can be on the agenda earlier and the public would be more aware of them. And in our Policy Review discussion, I believe that we discussed three minutes, five minutes, four minutes. And four minutes was actually a compromise based on the data that I believe Ms. Owens had collected from the meetings of the average public speaker and how long they spoke. And that showed, the data that she had collected showed that the average public forum speaker spoke for four minutes. So four minutes was actually a compromise on the board's part in the Policy Review meeting, not to take it away, but just to take off one minute, hoping that that would allow for more people to be able to speak. So I'm glad this is going back to Policy Review. Hopefully, we'll come back out. And I appreciate so much Ms. Owens' comments that we need to work together collaboratively, and this is not about the board trying to do something. And sometimes, this is the only format. We have to discuss it with each other. We don't have the privilege that the state legislature has of behind closed doors. Everything we do is out here in front of everybody. So, anyway, thank you very much.
Ms. Christie.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm not gonna add, I mean, say the same things again. I agree with pretty much what everybody up here said. But I will add that I'm a little frustrated with our Policy Review process. And, you know, Mr. Thomas and his staff have listened to us talk about public forum how many times now? You know, and I think that there are probably much better uses of their time than hearing us discuss the same policies over and over and over again. So when this goes back to Policy Review, if maybe we can also discuss how we're going to review policies in the future, that would be nice. to review policies in the future, that would be nice.
Thank you. Ms. Owen.
I would just point out that we are required to review every policy at least every two years. So we, we do have to go through every, every policy.
Seeing no more lights, we have a motion and a second on the floor to send this policy B-180 back to policy review. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item 9B, approve first reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy E-191, School Nutrition Program Charges as amended.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Norman and Owen, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
9C, approve first reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy E-200, Insurance Management as amended.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Norman and Owen, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
9D, approve first reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy E-201, Workers' Compensation as amended.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Norman and Owen, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item 9E, assent back to policy review. 9F, approve second reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy C-131, Compensation Guides and Contracts as amended.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Norman and Owen, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
TNA, approve local consolidated grant application and receipt of funds from the State of Tennessee Department of Education for federal Title 1A, Title 1 Neglected and Delinquent, Title 2A, and Title III funding in the amount of $17,797,148 for fiscal year 2020.
So moved.
Motion by Norman.
Second.
Second by Owen, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
TMB, approve consolidated grant application and receipt of funds from the State of Tennessee Department of Education for special education services in the amount of $13,720,229, IDA Part B, and for preschool special education services in the amount of $357,163, IDEA Preschool for fiscal year 2020.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Norman and Horn, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
TNC, approve receipt of funds from the State of Tennessee Department of Education for a federal Title 4A Student Support and Academic Enrichment Grant in the amount of $1,152,600 for fiscal year 2020.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Norman and Horn, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
TND, approve State of Tennessee Department of Education 2019 Alternative Breakfast Grants in the amount of $1,000 for Gibbs High School and $5,000 for West High School to expand or create an alternative breakfast model for increased breakfast asset, access and participation at each school.
Move for approval. Second.
Motion by McMillan, second by Norman, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
TNE, approve Program Host School Agreement and Teachers of Critical Languages Program Grant from the United States Department of State Bureau of Educational and Cultural Affairs for a fully funded teacher of modern standard Arabic at West High School for the 2019-2020 school year.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Bab, second by Norman, discussion? All in favor?
I have a discussion.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Just quickly, Madam Chair, I just want to say that I think this is a really great opportunity for the students at West, and I think it also speaks to how diverse our Knox County school system actually is. So I'm glad we approved this, or can.
Thank you, thank you. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
TNF, approve Walmart Community Grant in the amount of $5,000 for Halls High School designated for the purchase of library books featuring diverse characters or written by diverse authors.
Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Babb, second by Satterfield, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
TNG, approve donation from the Bluegrass Elementary School PTO in the amount of $32,710.29 designated for the purchase and installation of a pavilion at Bluegrass Elementary School.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Horn, second by Norman, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
TNA, approve donation from the West High Athletic Council in the amount of $262,792 designated for the renovation of the fieldhouse at West High School.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Bab, second by Norman, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
TNI, approve donation from the Drug Enforcement Administration in the amount of $11,250 designated to transportation expenses for 6th grade students traveling to and from the Tennessee Smokey Stadium in Kodak, Tennessee for You Choose Kindness Day on May 14, 2019.
So moved. Second.
Motion to approve by Norman, second by McMillan, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Ms. Horn, do we have any more public forum?
Yes, ma'am, we have just a few speakers. Shakil Johnson, please state your name and county of residence.
Hello, my name is Mrs. Kelal. I go to ALHots Elementary.
That's Mrs. Horn right there. Okay, now.
Okay, okay, thank you, you can go ahead.
When I was watching Brain Pop, when it was about Tuskegee Airmen, and it mentioned, it had a people holding a rainbow banner flag, and then I, uh, it was LGBT, then I asked, then I went to my home and asked my dad, "What is LGBT?", and he told me. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Okay. And next, Mr. Johnson?
I was going to continue with him. How you doing, Miss Yell? Okay.
Okay, if you can state your name and county of residence.
My name is Mr. Johnson, West Knoxville, six children, Knox County Schools, eight total, one at Pelossepee taking advantage of the two years. I haven't been here in about four years. I recognize some people sitting over here and there, and I'm going to continue what my son was talking about. When he came home and mentioned that to me, and I get it that this day and age things are changing, acceptance and diversity and things are going on, but when he comes home and asks me about what is LGBT, what is all that stuff, I explained it to him because, you know, things are changing, but beliefs are changing. That community is getting more respect that they deserve. But what got me was that when he's telling me about these things and he says, "Dad, what is that?", he was hearing that during the Tuskegee Airmen. And in the four minutes that I got, I'm going to explain some things that I just want the Board to hear about, and a lot of you might get it, understand it, I know one will get it just because of the ethnic makeup of the group. It's just some things that I want to share with you guys that I think that you guys need to hear. Now, I might say some things that people might get offended about, might get their feelings hurt, but I believe that being a Black American, there's things that I can say concerning diversity that maybe my counterparts might get in trouble for. People might call them bigoted, or they're being hateful. And so my thing is, is that as a Black American, I'm an inheritor of civil rights. That is my legacy. That is something that people that have went before me has done, so that way, even in this capacity, I can stand up in front of all of you. And so as I stand here, I'm not trying to take away from that community. I just didn't like it that it was coincided with the issues, the challenges, the struggles that were going on with the Black community. It's, it's, it's been a change in society, and you guys have noticed it, that they are putting both struggles together as though they are the same thing, but they are not. There are things that, there are struggles and accomplishments, there's things that are distinct differences, is what I want to bring up. As I said, I didn't like explaining that to my son. Generations before me have died. They have lived through horrible situations and lynching and murdering and, and raping and have their businesses and churches and towns and things were, were burned and their blood, sweat, and tears were shed so that those of us that could claim after them could have these freedoms. And not too long ago, if you are 65 and up, me standing here would not be happening. This is the legacy of the Black community. And while these evils were going on to the Black community, another community was barely skinning their knee because of ignorance had them in the closet. For me, I'm already out. You can, living in West Knox County, I could be out, out in a store, and you feel like a, a raisin in a bunch of milk and somebody ate up all the bran. Think about it. I didn't have to come out to my parents. My whole family is Black. We are openly Black. We are openly in an interracial relationship. And these are just the things that I did not like combining those things together. And there was a promise that I had gave Knox County Schools about four years ago, that when I received a letter that was meant to silence me with a bunch of lies, it sort of reminded me of the walls of Jericho, how when they marched around the walls, God had given them instruction and said, "You march around until things change." So me, I've been on the outside, listening, watching, sending an email, I'm sure all you got an email from me about tonight, that even though I'm on the outside of the walls, today I'm coming in to say, "Respect our legacy. Respect our lineage. Tennessee was the state that started segregation. Maybe now you can lead in this. Have the highest respect for our legacy and ultimately have the highest respect for our parent-child relationships." So that's it. I'm Mr. Johnson, and I approve this message.
Thank you. All right, next we have Ronnie Chandler.
Ronnie Chandler, Knox County, Tennessee.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the Board, Superintendent Thomas, Mr. Duper, Ms. Cottney, I signed up for, for public forum today to say thank you for recommending in the FY '20 budget the level of funding for year two included in the five-year Knox County Schools Grad Memorandum of Agreement established last spring. The agreement stipulates that reporting begins in December 2019 after final information is received on the 2019 graduation rate and the initial post-secondary enrollment of that class and final grad scholarship award is known. We already, however, have seen an increase in the projected number of 2019 students on track for the grad scholarship subject to verification of final GPA. We celebrated 125 scholars at the Convention Center celebration last month, and they're planning to attend 30 different institutions, with 16% of them indicating Pelossepee and 9% indicating UT Knoxville. There are also 39 grad scholarship recipients completing post-secondary this spring semester. 46% of them are from the class of 2015, graduating with four-year degrees within four years. The completion of these 39 now means a cumulative total of 541 graduates from Austin East and Fulton who have completed a post-secondary credential since the first grad cohort of 2005. Our continued partnership together continues to leverage additional resources beyond the designated funds for high school-only supports. And this year, grads' community connections made possible spring clinicals for the Fulton Health Science students at Fort Sanders Regional after Tenova St. Mary's was closed. Additional early college and, early college and career awareness events, including a experience at Meriville College for Latino students from, from Lonsdale and customized experiences. Additional ones have been added this year and earlier today through a grant from the Women's Fund of East Tennessee and a donation from Master Services. And with the help of several community partners, grad presented Urban Brilliance, a hands-on experience in STEM for center-city public school children in the middle schools and elementary schools that we support with you. More than 200 children from six of the 12 supported schools attended the event presented at the Chain Center. Activities were provided by the Austin East Robotics Team, the Chain Center, Fulton Health Sciences, Girl Scouts of East Tennessee, Smart Institute, UT Knoxville Center for Ultra-Wide Electrical Engine Energy Transmission, and the Tickle College of Engineering, Yo STEM. Denzo brought Henry the Robot and Sandy the Sand Table. Oak Ridge National Lab brought advanced manufacturing demonstrations, and Overcoming Believers Church provided a space for lunch. The senior stroll for Austin East feeder was this past Monday, and for the Fulton grad feeder will be on May 16, where the, the high school students go back to their feeder elementary and middle schools in their capping gam and regalia and walk those halls. Hands on the Future grad summer institutes begin after Memorial Day at Pelossepee State, TCAD, and UT Knoxville for more than 300 Austin East and Fulton students. Hands on the Future competitive paid summer internships begin by the end of May for 24 students from the two high schools at 14 community companies and will continue through the summer. Then July 29, the first day for teachers, we're back in the buildings as well to start the new school year. We are unapologetically advocates of public education, and we appreciate the opportunity to serve a population of students who you know are truly brilliant, but who often have more potential than they have access to resources. Our partnership together addresses that barrier, and on their behalf, I say thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Chandler. Next we have our last speaker, Ethan Lindsay.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm speaking on behalf of the policy amendment to J-240, the original edition, and also opposing the second edition proposed by Mr. Norman. I quite frankly believe that technology is our future, and these policies, they discourage teachers from incorporating it into our classrooms. One of the main reasons teachers have students use their phones is because of the lack of technology already at schools. While some schools have a one-to-one program, most schools only have maybe free to one program, which makes it hard for teachers to reserve certain devices in order to be incorporated into classroom. The point of school is to prepare students for the future rather than to prepare them for the past. And if the future is progressing towards full incorporation of technology, whether it be for personal life or in professional life, then schools need to be able to incorporate that as well to help familiarize students with those devices. I understand there are certain concerns regarding the safety of students, but if we can figure out a way to properly educate them on safe ways to use them, then that will certainly benefit all students in allowing them to be able to use these devices to their positive By asking a teacher to get special administrative power just to use a device for one thing, it's ridiculous because it discourages them from asking in the first place. So by giving the power to the teachers to decide when to use them, that would allow the devices to be incorporated more often than they already are. I was talking to a teacher today who can even get Chromebooks to use just because everyone's reserved them for the final weeks of school. And if we don't have these devices, but it's still a way to incorporate devices into it, and cell phones provide that opportunity to use devices and overall progress through the technological world for students. I believe that also, could, devices connect us with- I believe that also could, devices connect us with the world, and by restricting them for eight hours a day really doesn't connect us. Parents want to be able to check in with their kids, and unless you want hundreds of parents calling the school just to ask how one child's doing, that's going to become even more of a distraction than the possible distraction of someone having a phone out in class. These devices should also be able to be used during free periods in which we can use these devices to better expand our knowledge of certain things that we may have discussed earlier in today, or that we plan on discussing in the future, therefore allowing us to contribute more to the conversation. Going back to concerns, the Knox Schools buildings have, like, very little reception, if any, at that to use these devices, allowing most students to have to connect to the internet. Through this, we're able to control and filter what goes in and out. And I understand the concern of them using that for bullying, or even just miscellaneous, um, things. We're able to control that, and through that, we're able to sort of help and gauge them to where they need to be looking instead of away from where they shouldn't be looking. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lindsay. Madam Chair, that concludes public forum.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Lindsay, where do, do you mind telling me where you go to school?
Um, I go to Harden Valley Middle. I'm attending LNN next year.
Excellent. Thank you for coming and speaking. And, uh, Mr. Little Johnson, thank you for coming and speaking too. We always love to hear from, from our students. That's much appreciated. Seeing no lights, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
All right, we are adjourned.